Welcome to the city of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, November the 19th, 2014, at 7:35. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise and let's bow our head this evening. Father, you are the source of all goodness and love. Please look kindly upon us and receive our heartfelt gratitude at this time where we give thanks. Thank you for all the graces and blessings for our food, our shelter, our health, our family, and our friends. We pray for those that are lonely, ill, and frail, especially during the holiday season. We pray for our servicemen and women who are protecting our borders and their families in hopes that they can be reunited with their families and friends. We pray so that our leaders make the right decisions for the greater good of the community. We pray for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, so that they are safe. Tonight, we ask for a moment of silence as we pray for those who have deceased over the last week, especially our resident George De Parra, a friend of the city of West Miami, Mr. Pedro Milian, and very special to us, Mr. Quintana's mother, who passed away yesterday. And we pray for all these families so that their healing process can begin. We ask this in your name.
Captain, for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Walt Hall, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Walt Hall, Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Mayor Eduardo Mujinha.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to recognize and welcome our Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, Chairwoman. Welcome to the city of West Miami. Very close to. And also, I would like to recognize Ana Garcia, City Manager for the city of North Miami Beach. Welcome. With that, I would like to take the liberty.
Yes. If you can indulge me, can we also recognize our ex-Commissioner of the city of West Miami?
Absolutely.
Mr. Boucet.
Our former Vice Mayor.
Former Vice Mayor and Commissioner.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for that. With that, with your permission, I would like to take out order a couple of items. Let's start first with 10A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 11A.
11A. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11, New Business Agenda item, item 11A, Presentation of Recognition to City Attorney Jose Villalobos in Appreciation of His Nomination for Legal Legend Award 2015. This item is sponsored by Mayor Mujinha and Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wrote a couple of things here about Mr. Villalobos, who is not only our city attorney, but is a dear friend to us, to all of us over here. Mr. Villalobos, tonight, we award you with the Legal Legend Award, not from us, but we recognize it. Jose Villalobos has served the city as a city attorney for the city of West Miami since August 1994, believe it or not. Jose Villalobos represented the city of West Miami pro bono back in a federal court when the city was sued, unfortunately, over a holiday declaration. I will not get into the details, but presiding was the Honorable King, and the city prevailed in this case due to your help. On October 28, 2014, Jose Villalobos was awarded the 2015 Legal Legend Award by the 11th Circuit Court Committee. Jose Villalobos was chosen from a group of 90 elite and distinguished attorney in our community as one of the three award recipients. The selection proceeded in tale review of court experience, civil and criminal. Mr. Attorney, graduated attorney in 1959 from the University of Villanueva, Havana, Cuba. Jose Villalobos came to the United States after being persecuted by Castro regime, where he, alongside with wife Isabella.
Isabella.
As we call it, Chaka. The thing is, I'm sorry. We know you as Chaka, so that's why. I raise his son, former state senator Alex Villalobos, and his daughter Christina.
Patricia.
Patricia.
I'm sorry. That was my error, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's his means.
Means. After years, after 1973, Supreme Court Division Mr. Villalobos, as well as many other exile attorney, were offered the opportunity to validate their U.A. Doctor degree. In 1976, Jose Villalobos obtained his Law degree, Doctor with Honor from the University of Florida. Jose Villalobos became a guardian during the Mariel boat lift, where he became a legal guardian for over 1,500 youngsters who arrived from Cuba without their parents. To me, that was a great, great accomplishment. Jose Villalobos has served as an attorney for over 35 years in Miami-Dade County. Mr. Villalobos, you deserve that and a lot more. With that, I would like to, I would like to, well, Maran Clerk, what's to follow here? I know.
Yes, we have a recognition to be presented to Mr. Villalobos. So if Mr. Villalobos, please.
So why do we come forward? Chairwoman, are you sure you don't want to come up over here?
After.
After, okay.
How many years? You asked me at this point. How many years? Many years. You tell me.
Tonight, we want to recognize you on behalf of the city of West Miami. We want to give you this plaque. Jose Pepe Villalobos, City of West Miami, City Attorney. In recognition of your continuous service, your professional service, contribution to the practice of law, vision in promoting better government, and 20 years of legal service to the city of West Miami as our municipal attorney. Congratulations on your nomination by the 11th Judicial Circuit Historical Society as 2015 Legal Legend, dated this 19th day, November 2014. Eduardo Mujinha, Mayor, Juan Blanes, Vice Mayor, Candida Blanca, Commissioner, Ronda Rodriguez, and Luciano Suarez. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's nice, Billy. It's nice. Wait, wait.
This is Chaka. Mr. Villalobos is, I want to say, better half.
We love her, Villalobos, not.
And in the audience, Mr. Mayor, we also have Mr. Villalobos's brother, Carlos, who's here this evening to join in and celebrate this great occasion.
He's a very famous Peppes brother. Whenever he is, he's Villalobos's brother. Cheese.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Villalobos.
My pleasure. No, no.
What a pleasure, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, administration, Yolanda, the Police Department. What a pleasure to be home. And I was watching your words and everything, and I went back like 20 years back?
Back in time.
Back in time. I remember the time when the city of West Miami was declared in bankruptcy, and the governor was going to appoint board to come and make decisions in the city. There was a declaration of a 52% deficit in the general fund. The city had to go to the bank and get a loan to pay an honor payroll. At that time, I was newly elected mayor of the city, and that happened like a month after my election. And one of the best decisions I have made, together with my colleagues, and Peter's here, was to change leadership. And we did it at that time. We appointed Yolanda as the city manager of the city, and we appointed Mr. Villalobos as the city attorney at that time, together with others, some who are here and some who are not here anymore. And that was the beginning of the changes in the city, the beginning of coming back to fiscal responsibility, and that is due because nothing can be done by one person. It's by a group of persons that can get together and make a difference. And I am very happy that you have all maintained the city in a prosperous way, and I commend you for that publicly. I remember Yolanda staying here long hours, even at night, working and trying to find solutions, and we all did it together. Mercedes was always making numbers and telling us the negative part, but we never paid too much attention because we always had hopes, and those hopes became a reality. Mr. Villalobos, let me remind you that Samuel Johnson, the English poet, once said some words. "The law is the last result of human wisdom acting upon human experience for the benefit of the public." And Miami-Dade County today is privileged to honor those persons who have dedicated themselves to upholding the law of our land with the highest esteem to ensure equality, fairness, and justice for all. You are a remarkable person, an incredible professional. I am not going to tell you how proud we are that you were named 2015 Legal Legend by the 11th Judicial Circuit Historical Society of History in Miami. We are very proud of you, but mostly what you have done throughout the years to help everyone pro bono, everyone who needed assistance, you have always been there. You're going to see that Biscaya owes you an incredible amount of gratitude for your leadership in keeping Biscaya, changing Biscaya. What you have done creating as one of the founding members of the Cuban-American Bar Association that we are very proud of to have today, you were part of that, and we owe you a lot. Throughout the years, you have been appointed to so many boards that I am not going to start naming them all, but they are here in this proclamation. That's why, because of everything you have done, because of how proud we are and how thankful we are to you, it's fitting and proper that official acknowledgement be given to you, Mr. Villalobos, on this great occasion with this distinction and this honor, which is a thank you for your contributions that you have made throughout the years in your past and continue doing so. We deserve that. So be it resolved on behalf of Carlos Jimenez, the mayor of Miami-Dade County, and the members of the Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of the residents. We don't represent ourselves. We represent those who gave us the trust to be placed in this position. So on behalf of this community in Miami-Dade County, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November the 19th of the year 2014, as Jose Pepe Villalobos Day in Miami-Dade County, and we commend you for that.
And I will join my words to Commissioner Suarez. Mr. Villalobos is who he is, not only because of his father, but also because of his wife.
Yoli, on the phone?
Sure.
Like in the old times.
to you. I usually take over and you cannot stop me, but tonight is a special night.
All the years together.
Peter.
How many years?
I don't know. Come here.
Thank you.
Like in the old times?
Rebecca, as always, speak about other people.
Yes.
Name you felicidad.
Give me a little more, yeah. Are you speaking English?
Something.
She never takes credit for anything that she had done.
He speaks English.
I'm not going to kiss you.
Congratulations.
If we had not had Rebecca, probably we would not have the city of West Miami.
Thank you.
Very nice.
I'm not going to kiss you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's very nice. Very nice.
Thank you.
Let me say a couple of things.
Speak into the record, please.
Throughout the years, Rebecca had been the pillar of this community. She had been always, not only supporting us, but also helping us, not only when she was a mayor, when she was a commissioner, but also as a chair. When we ever need any counsel, any direction, we go and come to Rebecca. I'd like to say that Commissioner Suarez, like usual, stalked my thunder. Because many of the things that I'm credited to have done, it could not have been done if I had not had the wife that I have. Chaka had been with me for, I'd like to say that I've been married 10 times to the same woman. Every year, every five years, I like to take the oath of marriage again and ask her, would you like to be my wife? And she usually says, well, I don't know. I'll tell you, we're going to be 55 years married. If I had to do it again, I would do it 10 times over. I don't know if she would have done the same thing.
By the look on her face?
Because I am very hard to live with. I have to say that when I was revalidating my degree, it was not hard. I don't like to say hard, but it was challenging. And my wife was working as a seam dress for 75 cents an hour. When my first child was born, Alex, before a week was over, Chaka was there without air conditioning, right next to a machine that steam pressed. And if it had not been for Chaka, I would not have been an attorney today. It had been very rewarding. It had been a very satisfying life. To me, Chaka is the source of my pride. She had taken care of my kids. I want you to know that I'm colorblind. I don't see colors. And if I can dress, it's because she is the one that combines my clothing. Otherwise, I don't know what I would do. I remember that one day I went out and I wanted to purchase my own clothing. So I purchased a combination jacket and pair of slacks, and when I came home, she was horrified because it was something like green and yellow and red or something terrific. But I want to thank God Almighty that had afforded me the possibility of living free. And if I had done what I have done, it's because I believe that it's the duty of every citizen to try to give out to others that don't have for something that we have enjoyed, which is liberty and freedom in this great country. Many times, I'm asked, as a matter of fact, daily, I'm asked when I'm in the elevator or greeted by someone, how are you doing today? And I say, I'm doing great because I live in the United States of America.
Mayor, I have a question for Mrs. Villalobos.
Sir?
No, I have a question for your wife.
Chaka, you're welcome.
Mrs. Villalobos, thank you very much for you as the person who coordinated his clothing in the way he lives. Thank you. Because when we see an elegant guy, now we know you are. I have a question. Does he knows how to select his underwear? Oh, God. Thank you very much. I'm very emotional, better. But thank you. Thank you for coordinating him. Thank you.
That's too funny.
I'm surprised at the kind of wife you have. She's wonderful. I wish you have a wife like her with that mentality.
Next item. Next item. Let's move along before it gets complicated. Item 11B.
Yes, item 11B, Presentation of Recognition to City Manager Yolanda Aguilar on her 20 years of service as City Manager for the city of West Miami. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanca and by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanca.
Yolanda Aguilar is being recognized this evening on her 20th anniversary of serving in the position of City Manager of the city of West Miami. Facts about Yolanda. Employed by the city of West Miami January 21st, 1982, Yolanda Aguilar was appointed to the position of City Manager October 18, 1994, for a total of 30 and a half years of service to the city of West Miami. Yolanda Aguilar was the first female Hispanic City Manager in the state of Florida. She is well-known in municipal circles. Yolanda serves as the 2013-2014 President of the Miami-Dade County and City Manager Association. Yolanda has been recognized on numerous occasions as the recipient of the Mayor Award for Excellence. Yolanda Aguilar has been recognized by the PBA as the manager of the gears. She has been a resident of the city of West Miami since 1971. For numerous contributions in her career and dedication to public service and her years of public service, the mayor and the city commission recognize her on her 20th anniversary as City Manager for the city of West Miami.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Let's come forward before she starts speaking.
How many years, huh?
Thirty-one and a half.
Whoa, we have a big calendar. Wow. How many years, huh?
Eighteen.
Because he's eight, twenty, thirty-five. Everybody's over 20 years in this city. Great.
What can I say? Can't say it all. But before, I mean, on a very personal note, we all know Yolanda for a long, long time. I mean, she is, I can tell you the heart of the city. She has a tremendous capability, not only as a manager, but to read people, to always think of what's the best for the city of West Miami. And as Villalobos said, our Commissioner Rebecca Sosa puts the people before. Yolanda follows the same footsteps. She puts the people before anybody else, and her family, too. With that, Yolanda Aguilar, City of West Miami, City Manager. In grateful appreciation, your 20 years of service as a city manager, High Mayor Eduardo Mujinha and the City Commission recognizes you relentless commitment to the benefit of the city and our residents. As the longest-standing city manager in Miami-Dade County, your efforts and devotion to the city of West Miami are truly impressive and unparalleled. With all our gratitude, dated this 19th day, November 2014, from all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, West Mayor.
Armando.
Not yet. Not yet.
Thank you.
Ana, you want to come over?
No, no.
Oh, okay, okay. Wait. Oh, by the way, we got something else.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know this comes as a surprise to you, but this is well overdue. We had this also made. We mentioned the 20-year, but one thing that we couldn't do was a 30-year, actually. Three decades of service, employment, and award presented to Yolanda Aguilar, City Manager, City of West Miami, in recognition of your three decades, 30 years, of loyal, dedicated service and commitment to the city of West Miami. And it's in, well, presented this 19th day, and this, we were supposed to do this, and what happened, we had a little conflict, and we never did it. But I think you deserve it.
Thank you.
We've been waiting for the right moment to give you this plaque.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
From all of us.
Members of the city.
Again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I don't know if I can speak into the mic.
No, no.
My friend Ana is here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the honorable Chairwoman and one of the trailblazers for women in Miami-Dade County, the Honorable Rebecca Sosa. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Villalobos, and to you, congratulations. I am honored to have met you today. I come from North Miami Beach as a city manager of North Miami Beach, but I'm also here as a friend of Yolanda Aguilar. I'm also here as the president of the Miami-Dade County City and County Managers Association, following in Yolanda's footsteps, who was the former president. But I grew up in West Miami. I grew up playing in the rec, where it was just a cement box with no windows. I grew up there playing softball, playing volleyball, went to West Miami Junior High. And I'm here to participate in honoring you because I continue to see the difference every day. Rarely do you have public servants that become managers that don't forget where they came from. You have been an inspiration to me. Your humility, your dedication, your genuineness is priceless, not just to me, but to all the leaders in Miami-Dade County. And on behalf of the Miami-Dade County Managers Association, all your colleagues that I'm representing here today, we wanted to present Anna, you want to come over?
No, no, I'll go.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, by the way, we got something else.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know this comes as a surprise to you, but this is well overdue. We had this also made. We mentioned the 20-year, but one thing that we couldn't do was a 30-year, actually. Three decades of service, employment, and award presented to Yolanda Aguilar, City Manager, City of West Miami, in recognition of your three decades, 30 years, of loyal, dedicated service and commitment to the City of West Miami. And it's in, well, presented this 19th day, and this, we were supposed to do this, and what happened, we had a little conflict, and we never did it. But I think you deserve it. We've been waiting for the right moment to give you this plaque.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
From all of us, again.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I don't know if I can speak into the mic. My friend Anna is here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the Honorable Chairwoman and one of the Trailblazers for Women in Miami-Dade County, the Honorable Rebecca Sosa. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Villalobos, and to you, congratulations. I am honored to have met you today. I come from North Miami Beach as a City Manager of North Miami Beach, but I'm also here as a friend of Yolanda Aguilar. I'm also here as the President of the Miami-Dade County City and County Managers Association, following in Yolanda's footsteps, who was the former president. But I grew up in West Miami. I grew up playing in the rec, where it was just a cement box with no windows. I grew up there playing softball, playing volleyball, went to West Miami Junior High. And I'm here to participate in honoring you because I continue to see the difference every day. Rarely do you have public servants that become managers that don't forget where they came from. You have been an inspiration to me. Your humility, your dedication, your genuineness is priceless, not just to me, but to all the leaders in Miami-Dade County. And on behalf of the Miami-Dade County Managers Association, all your colleagues that I'm representing here today, we wanted to present this plaque congratulating you on reaching 20 years of public service, actually 30 years, but 20 years as a City Manager. Folks, being a City Manager is one of the most challenging, challenging positions that anybody could have. And to maintain 20 years taking care of your people, you have to do with a heart and soul. So anyway, I am proud to be here, joining your Mayor, your Vice Mayor, the Commission, the great residents of the City of West Miami, to present this plaque and honor you for your 20 years of service as Manager for the great city of West Miami. Thank you, Yolanda.
I feel like I'm a monster.
You are, you are.
She won with her three. She was quite a praise in West Miami, that's why. I wish she'd known.
I'm kind of speechless, and that's hard for me. This is very nice.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, you're all invited. December 16 at 8:30 in the morning, because that's the day I didn't want to do it here. We're going to honor you at the County Commission. So I want to invite you and your family to join us that day.
Last but not least, we, the employees of the city, I mean, Yolanda has been an inspiration as friends, not as Yolanda as City Manager, as the boss or anything, just as friends. We want to present her with just a token of our appreciation. And the girls, please, come, we want to give her this orchid, I mean, as a token of our appreciation. The girls, si, vamos con la familia. Say the B for love.
I think we were going to make a statue.
Say the B for love.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was not going to let you speak, but anyway. Armando, we have to.
Thank you. Just very briefly, very brief, because I cannot, I can certainly not top Mr. Villalobos' speech, but I want to first and foremost, thank God for giving me the health, the strength, the wisdom, and the honor of serving the City of West Miami for 31 and a half years and a total of 20 as Manager. I do it with my heart. I come in here with a renewed sense of enthusiasm every day, spirit, and willingness to help. But I couldn't do this without, first, God in my life, my family, my mom, my daughter, my husband, my grandchildren, my son, who's not here this evening, and his family as well. I'm speechless, I'm overwhelmed by all the generosity and these kind words that have been said about me, but I love the city with a passion. This is my home, I was raised here. So I have a real stake in what occurs here. But my job is made simpler because of the people that I've had the privilege to work for and with, and that makes all the difference in the world. And as stated by Mr. Villalobos, we have people like Chairwoman Sosa here, who has mentored many elected officials, but I've also learned a lot from you, your leadership, and your passion to public service. I have had wonderful bosses throughout the years that have made my job pleasant, and as challenging as it is, it is worth every minute and every second of the day. So I thank you for presenting me with the awards. I look forward to many more years, Mr. Commissioner. As long as I can keep my hair in shape.
Remember, I'm the chairman of the senior citizens.
I'll be there someday. I'll be there someday. But I look forward to many more years of being part of this team, because as it was stated here before, it's not about one person, it's about a group of individuals who work together for a common goal. And our goal is to represent the citizens of the City of West Miami with honesty and dignity. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission, for everything that you do for me, for your leadership and everything you do for your residents. Thank you. And I said, and I thank my coworkers, because I don't consider myself being their boss, they're my friends, and they are an extension of my family. And you don't find what you have in West Miami everywhere you go. Believe me, I've been there, I've tried it, and this place has a special meaning. And I hope that future generations that stay beyond our time can really cherish this and continue to nurture this family environment, because this is for the greater good, people. This is really what it's all about. Thank you again. God bless you.
Let's take 10 minutes.
Now, enjoy.
Before we get back, first of all, I want to thank the Police Department for our token. Thank you so much. Beautiful. So, this coin is unbelievable. I don't know if it's the City of West Miami.
West Miami Police Department.
No, I know, I know, I know, but it's, the whole thing is beautiful.
Very nice.
City of West Miami Police Department.
That's a new patch, Mayor, on the back around.
Oh, professionalism.
Dedication.
Dedication and excellence.
Very nice.
Incorporated in 1947. Anyway, we're back. At this time, we're going to take item 10A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 10, Unfinished Business. Item 10A, Report by the Office of the City Manager and Discussion in Reference to City's Life Insurance Group Policy by City Manager, Mayor, and City Commission. Mr. Mayor, if I may give you a very brief summary of what occurred after the recent insurance renewal and the options that you have before you this evening.
Where's our City Attorney?
Our City Attorney went to escort his wife to her vehicle. Would you like to wait until he comes back up?
Please.
Thank you. We will.
Presentation of Minutes.
So let's take some items out of order. Let's go back to the order of the agenda.
With item four.
Item four.
Item four, Presentation of Minutes for Approval for November 5, 2014, Regular City Commission Meeting, and Commissioner Blanca abstains.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item five.
Item five, Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission. I issued a brief report. The first item on that report is a request for annual leave, for three days of annual leave. I'm making plans to leave town, and I would like to have your permission to do so. The memorandum that is attached to my report would appoint Acting City Manager Mercedes Leon as prescribed by the City Charter. The three days are Wednesday, November 26, December 1 is a Monday, and Tuesday, December 2, which I will make plans to come back into town and be present for the next commission meeting. So if there are no objections.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Have a great vacation.
Thank you. Just a little skip and hop away for a few days. The next item on my report is a 2014 Lighting of the Tree Ceremony as a follow-up. We are working with Mayor Muniya and trying to put the special event together on Tuesday, December 16, at 5 o'clock, the Lighting of the Tree Ceremony. There is a memo that is attached to my report, which was prepared by my assistant, Karia Corta, which basically outlines the donations that we have received, and it also provides a projection of the expenses as we see them today, to include manpower and vendors and all the services. And it looks like our donations will exceed the expenses by about $3,500. So we did very well this year, and our corporate partners and sponsors have responded nicely to the request for donations. So we will be meeting with staff, and we will be ready for the December 16. We have three schools coming to perform this year for the first time. Somerset Academy will be participating. We have our own homeschool, Savannah Heights Elementary, and we have the Lourdes Singers, Our Lady of Lourdes Academy, the Jazz Cats, and they're always very popular. So, and of course, Santa Claus will be coming to town. The next item on the agenda is the participation by the City of West Miami for a Healthy Community Champion 2015 Recognition Program. Our name, the city was actually offered by Chairwoman Sosa to the Department of Health, and we submitted an application on behalf of the city for the recognition program, which is primarily directed to a healthy and to the nutrition programs that we offer in the City of West Miami, both at the West Miami Recreation Center and at the Community Center. So that has been submitted with your recent passage of the resolution, and we hope that we will be considered, and that's a nice award by the state of Florida. I have attached a copy of our application, along with the responses for your ready reference. The Thanksgiving holiday coming up, the city will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November 27, and Friday, November 28. And of course, we wish you and the members of your family a very happy and blessed holiday season. The last item on my report is the Holiday Patrols. Chief Nelson Andrew has authorized the Holiday Patrols during peak holiday shopping season commencing on December 17, 2014 through December 31, 2014, between the hours of 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. He's issued, actually Lieutenant Delgado has issued an operational directive for your ready reference, and I've attached it to this report. We posted a press release issued by the Office of the Chief on our website, and that's linked to our Facebook page, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback, to include the Mayor of Miami Springs, Mayor Garcia, who has actually directed his City Manager to look into those same efforts for their community. So, Chief, thank you, and thank you again for a job very well done, always. That concludes my report.
Okay. At this time, I would like to go back to item 10A.
Item 10A, this is a report by the Office of the City Manager and Discussion in Reference to City's Life Insurance Group Policy by City Manager, Mayor, and City Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I started to advise you shortly after the insurance renewal that took place during the month of September, we were notified by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, which is the part of the Florida League of Cities, or the agency of the Florida League of Cities, where the city participates in the Medical Dental Vision Pharmacy and Life Program for city employees, city commissioners, city attorney, and their eligible dependents. Shortly after our renewal, we were notified by Mr. Aaron Carper, who is not here this evening because his grandmother passed away, and he is on his way to New York for the burial services and viewing. We were notified that they could not purchase a life insurance component that would insure the City of West Miami and their eligible, and the eligible dependents to the level that we were serviced before. Understanding that our benefits are rich in today's market, Aaron went back and worked with Standard, is the insurance company that they work with, and Standard basically came back after deliberations and advised Mr. Carper to advise the city that they could actually go ahead and insure us with the three tiers that we have of coverage, which you have your senior class management and elected official and city attorney with a particular benefit, which is $100,000, your police officers for $50,000, which is a contractual issue, and the labor force, a $20,000 life insurance benefit. In the past, the City of West Miami was self-insured for 25 years or 30 years, and there was a conversion clause. That conversion option is no longer available through the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. Mr. Villalobos and I had numerous conversations during the month of September with Mr. Carper regarding the issue of the company coming back after the renewal took place, and tell us that they could not offer us what we had negotiated. So, after numerous conversations and back and forth, Mr. Carper was able to assure us that they would be able to insure us with the three tiers of coverage. However, the conversion maximum amount of money that they could insure a person beyond their retirement after being vested and living in good terms was with a maximum benefit amount of $2,000. That's all they can do. In the meantime, and during the time that the league took the position that they could not insure us with the levels of coverage, we went to somebody who's a friend of the city, but he is a licensed insurance broker, and we went to Mr. Bouset, and he has served the city in the past, he's worked with an area on insuring some employees that fell through the cracks, and we went ahead and provided, through his services, we actually purchased some policies from Mr. Bouset, and because of the longstanding relationship with the city, we asked them to go to the market for us, because we were missing one component of the insurance that we offered the employees of the City of West Miami, and he went to the market. And he'd actually, we actually invited other agents to go out to the market, and Mr. Bouset was kind enough to bring us several proposals. I believe we got one from Lincoln National. I believe you also brought us back something from Standard, if I'm not mistaken, and you also brought us back something from Mutual of Omaha. And?
Unum.
Unum, I'm sorry, unum. We told Mr. Bouset what the city had enjoyed in terms of life insurance benefits, and he brought something back to us that is compatible to certain degree to what we have, because it does have the portability where an employee who lives in good standing or retires in good standing can portale that policy and convert it into an individual policy. And so, that was an interesting option. Both companies are AAA-rated companies, Standard as well as Mutual of Omaha. Uh, both companies are AAA rated companies, Standard as well as Mutual of Omaha, so I don't think anybody here is challenging the, uh, credibility of the companies or good companies. The only issue that we see here is the issue of whether the city wants to continue offering employees and, and, uh, the, um, the option of a conversion versus, uh, a policy that doesn't have a conversion clause. And that is what we bring to you this evening based on the different proposals that we have received, uh, that Mr. Bouset has brought in response to our inquiries, um, and after he's gone out to the market. Uh, that being said, Mr. Villalobos, if you want to guide me, um, we've, we've-
Let me, let me state that, um-
Juan.
Yolanda advised you, uh, back in August, uh, the League of Cities came out and made a presentation, and based on that, uh, presentation that they made, uh, you all made a decision and, uh, requested, uh, approve the, uh, the offer that the League of Cities had made. However, uh, over about, uh, September 28th or 29th, they came back with that, uh, information that, that they could not cover us, um, and of course, uh, Yolanda was very concerned because there were certain gaps that were not covered, and we all of a sudden were naked. So, uh, we further conversed with the League of Cities, and they finally, I advised them that they just could not just drop us, uh, and, uh, we finally were able to obtain from them that, uh, we would have a gap coverage, uh, from the time that they, they advised us that they were going to cease, uh, to such time as we decide to go some other route. In addition, there were certain issues that we had with the policy that they sent us, uh, the sample policy that they sent us. Uh, one that, um, Francis, uh, just comes out to my mind, it says, "An active elected official of the employer provided that the employer had passed a resolution providing an employee, uh, benefits to elected officials." So, um, that, uh, we countered by advising them that pursuant to section 2.6 of the, uh, West Miami, uh, uh, ordinance, code of ordinance, uh, ordinances, is that this was something that had already passed, and that, uh, the, uh, members of the, uh, the, and dependents of the city commission, city manager, city attorney, and other, uh, city officials, uh, and employees of the city commission, uh, are eligible to enroll and participate in the benefits of any group in health, uh, health, uh, life, health, uh, accidental hospitalization or annuity insurance. In other words, that was already covered by our, uh, code of ordinances. However, there were certain gaps that, uh, we observed that would not be beneficial to us, and that there is a possibility of, uh, by putting one, uh, policy against the other policy, we can a- actually negotiate a better deal for the city at a very reasonable cost, and that is the, they call retired employees. Now, when they talk about, um, and this is something that we need to find out, what was the intent of the legislature or the city commission when they passed this ordinance? What did they mean by that? In other words, uh, on the one hand, they say that the city manager, city, uh, elected officials are eligible, and then they talk about retired people. When you cease your activities as, uh, city commissioners and city mayor, uh, you're not retiring, you're just cease to perform services for the city. And since they, uh, that section, uh, talks about a retired employee must be continuously employed by the City of Miami, of West Miami for a period of no less than eight years, I would assume that the intent was that you all be covered after a service of eight years, which is only reasonable because you all don't make any money. I mean, you, you, you're not receiving any benefits, you're doing just services. And, uh, I think that, uh, by putting one company against the other, uh, we can achieve, perhaps, a, uh, a, something that, uh, uh, would be more beneficial for the cities, uh, for the city economically and also for benefit, especially for the, uh, employees of the cities, the city commissioners, and of course, the city attorney. We have, uh, Mr. Bousy, uh, that, uh, I believe that wants to make a presentation. Am I correct, Mr. Bousy?
If, uh, you would yield to, um, the representatives of, uh, Mutual of Omaha, um, and obviously, um, Mr. Peter Bouset, so that he can walk us through what the, their company or their offer is, so that you can make a decision on whether we want to go with this proposal or stay with the League of Cities, um, and continue with what they have offered. So, I think at least we have, uh, some choices, uh, for your deliberation and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosas.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure to be back, and, uh, I want to thank you all for the public service that you commit to, uh, helping the city. Uh, with me here is Reese. I figured that I brought the representative from Mutual of Omaha, because you ran to hear from the horse's mouth exactly what it is that we've proposed, and so we, I've asked him to come in and briefly highlight the areas that, uh, of concern. Um, I'm here to show my face and accountability of, God forbid, I know that you've put a lot of trust in people, and if I can put my face, uh, to, to, to the table here and say, "Hey, I'm good, responsible for whatever's going to happen, uh, for, with your program going forward," uh, that's what I'm here to do. So, with that in mind, I wanted to introduce you to Reese. He's going to go over the proposals that we've brought to, to the table, including the two years of rate guarantees that, uh, the others didn't, so. Reese, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Um, I hope my wife's watching me on TV tonight. Um, is it okay, I brought, um, a packet, I brought five, hopefully that's the right number, um, and I'll be happy to, well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to come and present and talk to you this evening, I appreciate it. Um, I represent Mutual of Omaha, I actually manage a South Florida group sales office for Mutual of Omaha, and Peter came to me several weeks ago talking about the problem that the city had with the League of Cities and, you know, an alternative plan that may meet your needs, so, um, I actually made a little hand note after talking to, uh, the city attorney, um, made some adjustments in here, but, uh, if everyone kind of opens a proposal on the first page, what I can do is there are three tiers, we actually have a fourth class in here, from what I understand, um, as commissioners and a city attorney, you're not actually paid, so you're not an active employee, um, or you're not obligated to work 30 hours a week, so, um, there's three tiers essentially, including the commissioners, that were the, um, as an executive, you get the $100,000 tier, and then you have a center tier, I think the police and firefighters, they get the $50,000, and that the city, uh, employees get $20,000. Is, is that, that correct?
Yes, and does not include firefighters, our fire, the fire department is part of Miami-Dade County.
Okay, okay.
So that's only inclusive of-
Right, I don't have a census in front of me, so whoever was designated at the $50,000 is who would get that.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Also, as this city employee, you're obviously, uh, required to be active at work and work a minimum hours, I think the number that was thrown out was 30, however, as a commissioner and city attorney, you're not obligated to work any minimum number of hours, because you, as a, you know, working for the city or putting in hard work, you may work more than 30 hours, but there may be times you're working less than 30, so you're not held to that standard, okay? Um, now, the way the proposal works, um, you have the exact amount of coverage, now two, two items in here, whatever level of insurance, I do want to add, um, when we spoke to Yolanda on, on some telephone calls, normally a proposal has age reduction, and what age reduction is, when you get to a certain age, the amount of life insurance does reduce, so normally a policy starts at age reduction at 65. Um, what we've done is we've adjusted the proposal for the city, so age reduction starts at 70. Without age reduction, the cost would be exponentially a lot higher, okay? So there's an age reduction in the plan at 70, whatever amount of insurance you have drops to 40%, and at 75, whatever amount of insurance that you have drops to 25% of the principal amount, okay? So if you're 70 years old, you'd have a, instead of 100, if you were in the top class, you'd have 40,000. That's how the age reduction applies. Now, two, couple of features that we have in the proposal, we threw in some extra, you know, added bells and whistles, there's what's called a portability feature. So if you're a city, if you're an employee or commissioner, and you leave the city, if you're under the age of 70, you can port the coverage on similar rates to what you're paying now. So, they are age-banded rates, so they will change, you know, as opposed younger and all, at, versus somebody older, but it's not like converting to a whole life policy which is very expensive, so it's much less expensive to have that portability feature. Now, anyone can convert whether you're young or old, that's another aspect of our, uh, policy. I heard reference to conversion, that you can only convert a certain amount. On our plan, if you can port, you can port whatever amount you have in cup, for, so if you had $100,000, let's say an employee's 50 years old, they have $100,000, they want to take it with them, they can take the entire amount. Um, you can also convert, so if somebody is working for the city and they're 70 years old and they have the $40,000 of life insurance, if they leave and they want to convert that into a whole life policy, they can convert the entire $40,000 into a whole life policy. There's no medical evidence that's required, um, usually it's referred to as EOI, Evidence of Insurability, so you can take whatever amount you have with you at the time without showing any, you know, proof of good health, okay? Um, the cost for the plan for all the city employees, and there is, um, on the census we had about 65, and we know that can go up or down a little bit, um, is approximately, um, for the life insurance piece, $1,141.80. Um, there also, um, is an AD, what's called AD&amp;D, an accidental death and dismemberment component, so if somebody dies in an accident, let's say a car accident, whatever amount of life insurance they have, it would pay twice that amount, okay? So if you had $100,000 of life insurance and you died in an accident, your beneficiaries would get $200,000, okay? Um, this also includes a two-year rate guarantee, and that doesn't mean at the end of two years you're all of a sudden going to get a big rate increase. I will tell you, last year, um, on our block of business, the entire Mutual of Omaha block of business, the average rate increase was 1.6%, and a lot of times we like to, when we do a renewal, we like to give you a two-year rate guarantee, okay? Any questions so far?
Could you mention any other municipalities that you work with?
Sure, um, just to mention some of the municipalities, one of the largest municipalities or organizations at my office, or I was, uh, in honor to be a part of, we just wrote the, um, Broward County, um, School District, so it's, uh, all the teachers, uh, um, hard working teachers, it's about 26,000 lives, some of the local municipalities that we wrote are Town of Surfside, Town of, uh, Sunny Isles, Golden Beach, um, they're all right next to each other, so, um, those are just some of the local municipalities. So hopefully many of you know the name Mutual of Omaha, you might be remember the Wild Kingdom growing up, uh, Marlon Perkins. So, just, uh, also to reiterate, we do have some other added features that are included as part of the benefits program. Um, included with the life insurance, and this, there's no additional cost, um, is a travel assistance program for all your employees, including the commissioners and the city attorney, and what it does, it provides emergency legal, medical, and financial assistance if you travel more than 100 miles away from home, and it is for both personal and business travel, okay? So that's an added perk, um, and we do have some other benefits, um, if somebody dies in an accident, obviously accidents are unforeseen, cause a little bit more of a hardship on, on a family, um, there's a, an additional seatbelt benefit, airbag benefit, um, there's also a child education benefit that would pay a, a percentage of whatever insurance a person has, to have a child ready to go to college, it would contribute a certain amount per year, up to four years. There's also a childcare center benefit that would contribute, again, a percentage of their, um, insurance towards childcare if one parent has to now put a child in, you know, in a daycare center. So, um, that's it in a nutshell, you know, I hope you like what you heard, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer for, for them for you at this time. Yes.
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Could you go over the portability versus conversion again, just so we-
Sure, sure. There's three types of insurance, term insurance, universal life, and whole life. Term insurance is the least expensive insurance, that's where you get the most bang for your buck. The majority of people go out and get, especially, you know, younger folks will go out and get term insurance, um, and term insurance, when you port, you're porting to a group term, uh, group, um, term insurance plan, so it's a lot less expensive. I don't know if the, um, illustrations that we had are in your kits, we had emailed, but just to give you some examples, somebody who's like 40 years old who was porting $100,000 in life insurance, and my costume, I don't have the number in front of me, uh, so, I know I'm being recorded, but don't hold me to this exact number, but i- if it was $20 a month to port, to convert to a whole life policy, which can build up cash value, but it's also very expensive, it might be a couple hundred dollars a month, so it could be 10, 15, 20 times the amount to convert a policy as opposed to portability. So, it, it's, makes it a lot more affordable if an employee leaves and does, does want to take it with them.
And the portability allows you to take the full value of the life insurance versus the reduction?
No, the portable, portability applies up to age 70. So once you get to age 70, even if you have ported your insurance, you have, at age 70, if you're already gone from the city and you've ported, you would either have to convert, or if you're age 70 or above, you would convert your amount if you want to continue. However, since portability or the age reduction doesn't kick into age 70, anyone who is eligible to port would be able to port the full amount of insurance they had, which would either be the 150 or 20. Did that, that make sense?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
Well, I prefer, Mayor, I don't think, uh, I should make question to him. I, I talked to, to Aaron, um, a couple of weeks ago in the Florida League, and he told me, um, he was looking for a company to do what the, of manager's office was requesting about the portability. He was found something to present to us. I request from him tonight, be here, him, or somebody from his office. He sent an email, he's in the record, I have a copy, that his grandmother died in New York, so he went to New York, so he's not here to present his option, because there is something very interesting, and watch, Commissioner Plan, look at this. Uh, these gentlemen, employees' term life, employees' benefits. We elected officials, the city attorney, city engineer, we are no employees of the city, so we are out of this picture, basic, basically. And, and, uh, this is for employees that make retirement from the Florida League, from the Florida retirement, but we are not part of that. So there is, so, I, I don't see clear this, I think most of us have doubts, I expressing, because I understand, I don't know if everybody understands this, but I think, I think this is not clear. I think we should go here, the, the Florida League Group, and make his presentation, and then already did it, because according with the Florida League told me, Aaron, all the problem has been created by the portability. And the portability, uh, is not the priority in this case of our insurance, we have with the League of their life, their health, their dental, and the portability is not a priority, is not a necessary thing, and I think it's, it's getting a disrupting in our basic policy of insurance.
When you say it's not, you're talking about yourself, or you're talking about-
I'm talking about everybody. The, the idea of the portability introduces this new ingredient, ingredient. The Florida League has created all this, because Florida League is ready to work with us with something, but they are not here tonight, but I don't see, I don't see, it's, I don't, I think it's fair that we don't make a decision in this matter until we have the complete presentation from Florida League about the insurance package, and we should have one, I said, we have the, the, the health, the dental, with the Florida League, which is a big group, I know Omaha is very good, like other companies, but this is, you know, the Florida League of Cities, we have with them the, the bulk, the- but this is, you know, the Florida League of Cities, we have with them the bulk, the main part of the insurance policy. And I think if we do something, we should be with one insurer. And we be, like the attorney said, we should go with the Florida League of, at least to the end of these negotiations, to try to get something better from them, because they are ready. A couple of months, two months ago, when they came here, basically, and the attorney may answer my question, they almost make a commitment with us, with the city of West Miami, right? When they approved that. So this is even a legal matter, that they make a commitment approving that. So after that, Aaron told me, Luciano, the problem is the portability, the new ingredient create some kind of new aspect. And I think we should wait until the Florida League, we discuss with them, we ask them, perform what they promise, or see what they have to be done, but I don't think, they say, I don't think we are ready. In this moment, I think it's fair, the way we're working this. I don't think it's fair.
If that's the wheel of the table, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but I think we need to, whatever questions you have, or whatever doubts you have about this policy, I think we need to address those questions since they're here today, and clarify for the record, and as the gentleman expressed, we are on the record. So I think we should ask those questions.
Let me ask?
Like, you know, instead of waiting, I mean, that's, and what I said, I mean, I agree with you, if that's the wheel of the table, like always, I mean, it's not only one person, it's everybody on the table agrees to it. It's always, I agree, we don't need to rush into things without exploring other avenues, but since they're here tonight, if you have any question, I would prefer that we ask the questions for clarification, so there's no misunderstanding.
Sure.
Thank you. You presented benefit summary, employees' term, employee benefits. We are no employees of this.
Okay. We understand that. We have agreed, we're waiving any quote "active at work," any minimum hours for you, as long as you're a commissioner, or mayor, or appointed the city attorney, we're going to cover you. It's on the plan. You're going to be covered for that amount of insurance. We agree to.
According to the plan, once a person retire, have the right, or once they retire here, they have the right benefits to get the portability or whatever, right?
Somebody who retires if?
But we, that's the point, we never?
If you, if you stop working?
Let me explain.
Okay.
We never, we will never retire from here, because we don't belong to the Florida Retirement Plan.
Let me explain, if I may, Mr. Mayor. There's two versions, and this is why I believe that we need, we do need some time to view this and put it down in writing. One is retirement, and those are, that term is used for employees, it's not for you. For you and myself are cessation of duties, or cessation of services. And this will be what we were discussing off the record, is that correct, sir?
Yes. I mean, if your duties as a commission ceases, you would be allowed to convert the policy, whatever amount of coverage you had at that time.
If you want to. If you don't want to, that's fine.
If you don't want to, that's up to you.
No, that's obvious, that's a personal decision for everybody.
Right. It's a personal decision. Absolutely.
And that would be the same, that would be the same for this company or Legal Cities if you want to, except that Legal Cities give you two thousand dollars, and these people give you, in my case, they give me twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a big difference for me. So, but I think that it would be fair to get the opinion of the gentleman that could not make it here today, and I'd be happy to sit down with the manager and inform you individually, if you want to, of the final version of both offers. And in addition, changes that we have to make to our ordinance to be sure that the eight years that they're talking about benefit the chair and the commission, as well as the other employees.
My opinion, Mayor?
Can I hear from the vice mayor, please?
Sure. I think at this point, I think that what we should do is, Madam Manager, if you could contact this gentleman, Aaron, from the League of Cities, and have him give you all the pertinent information about his presentation. I don't know if you have it, or?
Yes, it's in your packet.
Okay, it's in the packet.
Yes.
Okay, so now that we have Mutual of Omaha's information, maybe, hopefully, what I'm suggesting is that, that we meet with the city manager and go over the differences and the benefits, and come to a decision. So when we have our next commission meeting, we can be ready to make a decision.
But it's not, it's not only the city manager. I think also the city attorney needs to review it, but?
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
You may call Aaron, the Florida League, I call him, to explain me, because, let me, just one moment. Because the city manager knows about it, what Florida League tells them, tells her. But sometimes you go to her office, and she have different things to do. And you may call Aaron, and stay with him thirty minutes on the telephone, don't take the city manager time, and ask all your doubts, your questions, like I did a couple days ago. And there are things that he told me, we have something new that we want to explain, but unfortunately, he's not here.
Well, if I may?
Yes.
If I may, and I do see the point of Commissioner Suarez, but I think it would be wise if the manager and myself find out like they did, the Legal Cities did send us a sample policy, that the Mutual of Omaha would send us a similar sample policy, and that we compare each other, and that we bring it out to you. Then if you have any questions, you can do whatever you want, and call, and so on and so forth, or entertain a public hearing, because this is what it's all about. So I think that the manager and, I feel that the consensus, I mean, nobody else has expressed themselves, but I feel that the consensus is to have a clear picture of what is it that we want for the city. Knowing that we are covered under the gap policy, and to search time as we do make up our minds.
Yeah. There's one thing that leads to me, maybe call me old-fashioned, but it is very important. It's, you know, we have something on the record last time from the Legal City, and then we've all voted, we're all voted in favor and so on, and then they changed their mind. On the other hand, like I said, call me old-fashioned, we have Peter Russo, who has come over here time and time again, serving the city, and has never gone back on his word. So to me, you know, think about that for a moment, and I'm not pushing one over the other, because after all, it is business, and we have to get not only the best for the employees, because we're not talking about us, we're talking about everybody. We're talking about the employees of the city, the police department, all of us. Okay? So, so of course, we want the best. Okay? At the end of the road, it might happen to be Mutual of Omaha, or it might be the other folks, but I just want to say that on the record, that to me, call me old-fashioned, but I don't like the back and forth.
Yes, I tend to agree with you, and also, the city attorney. I would feel more comfortable to see something in writing specifically, instead of a phone conversation, where I can base my decision on something that is on paper. I, within the next week, I am going to make a commitment and meet with the city manager, or if I have to call this person, I will, or if I need to reach out to this gentleman, I will. But I think that we should all commit within the next week, and orient ourselves, educate ourselves, and what would be the best decision to take. And next time we have a commission meeting, make the right decision. At this time, I am not ready to make that decision.
Okay.
You know, I've been maybe negligent on not, you know, studying this a little more. So I, myself, need some time.
Okay. Let me finally say something. I understand you all have to make a decision because it's yours. I understand the terrible situation that the manager was placed in, when all of a sudden, at the very last minute, we were told we cannot meet that. So that was sort of shocking. And we would not be here today had not have been for the fact that they would have kept, and to make it very, not blunt, but clear, if they had kept their word, you know, we would not be here today. So I think that we will get the sample policy from Mutual of Omaha, and we'll compare it, and we'll ask the questions, and then we'll, individually, if you want to, we'll get back to you, and you can, and give you hints of what we believe, or recommendations, and then you can make up your mind.
Madam Manager, if you have any question, any suggestions?
No, just for the record, I want to leave clear that the information sent by the League, as well as this presentation made this evening, with the changes as presented by the gentleman from Mutual, representing Mutual of Omaha, except for those minor changes that went on the record this evening, is inclusive if you're in your pocket. I don't want it to seem that we did not provide information. I know that the policies are lengthy, and as it is not my area of specialty, obviously, life insurance is a complex issue, and, you know, I pledge to also continue working with them, with Aaron Carper, who's given us tremendous service. I mean, there's, it's an unfortunate situation. We were contacted after the renewal took place. He advised us that they could not insure us, so we went out to the market. And so after we had engaged in other resources, then the League came back, and now we're like torn between two lovers, as the song says, and now there's a decision to be made. Do we want to allow for a conversion or a portability clause in our policy or not? And which way is the best way to go? And obviously, we will have to yield to your decision on that.
And that's only one issue. I mean, there's other issues that?
There's other components to include, an ordinance change.
It's wise for you to have taken that decision of?
Well, it looks like the majority is to explore this further and come back, and I apologize, we apologize for, and thank you, we want to thank you for your time, and stay there with us if, you know, if we can ask you.
Absolutely, and I know that you all make the right decision for the better of everyone, so we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you, Reese.
If you need a note for your voice, sir, I will be happy.
Gentlemen, let me tell you, I was involved in insurance business for a couple of years. I know, you know, you had to go and back and come back and presentation, I know. Don't feel bad, the point is that this is not clear enough for us, I'm pretty sure, you know. And this other guy, his grandmother died in New York, ninety-six years old. So I'm sorry, but personally, this is not totally?
Not a problem, I've been doing this for over twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Remember, the persistence is the best thing in the insurance agency, am I right? So I know that.
Persistent without being a pest.
All right. No, no, you're very nice people, no, you are one of them.
Good seeing you, Pete. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we, okay, can we go back to the order of the agenda? I would like to start from the top. City Attorney went out, so I guess we'll go to item seven, City Engineer.
Yes, report of City Engineers.
And at that, this time, maybe we should take the meters, so, you know?
Well, I'll just give a quick update on what we have coming up this week. Friday, we have a pre-bid for the lab project, the traffic calming project about to kick off. We're currently in procurement for the Public Works Building. We already had the pre-bid for that, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a point of observation. We are closed on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving?
This Friday, this Friday.
No, this coming Friday.
This, oh, I'm sorry, this Friday. I misunderstood, thank you. Pre-bid for the lab?
For the traffic?
The traffic calming.
As well as the roof project, correct? Yeah. Pre-construction, pre-construction on that one. And then we're getting, kicking off on the electrical improvements for the rec, and that's all we got going on right now, coming up, so.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, regarding the electrical upgrades at the rec center. Juan, I know that you have reported to me that it is the intention of the city, and obviously understood by the contractor, that that work would be completed between now and December sixteenth. Is that your position this evening as well?
Yes, otherwise, we will be issuing out a lot of candles.
Okay. Candlelight vigil, candlelight vigil. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. No, I just noticed this is a first reading, so, okay. Now, let's go back to the order of the agenda, item six.
Six, report of the city attorney. Your report?
I just wanted to talk to you briefly about what's going on with the red light cameras. They have been a host of lawsuits throughout the state, both in state and federal court, not only against ATS, but also against Xerox. That lawsuit I just received today, and it seems that it's going to be so complicated that eventually, a judge will have to come and say, enough, if anybody wants to join, let's go ahead and unify all the complaints, and have, of course, against Xerox, it cannot be consolidated, because it's another company, but all of the others, at some point, have to stop, because you're not going to have twenty lawsuits on the same issue over and over again. That would be chaos. So it's something wait and see, we have not been served with any complaints, so we'll just wait and see what happens.
Okay? Thank you. Next item?
Item eight, committed reports, report of the mayor.
I have no report at this time.
Item nine, cities in presentation, no presentations.
Okay. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, item ten B, based on the, on the, what we've seen in the discussion, this item is deferred until the next commission meeting of December the third.
Okay.
And the following item will be item eleven?
C.
C, which is a report by the Office of the City Clerk in reference to the official results of the City of West Miami Charter Amendment questions on the ballot of November fourth, two thousand and fourteen elections.
Thank you.
And it is the duty of this office to report the results of the November fourth, two thousand and fourteen elections conducted by the Miami-Dade County Elections Department as follows. And please be patient, there are seven amendments, and I have to read them into the records and report the results. On Charter Amendment number one, Article three, Section three oh two, qualifications to hold office and residency requirement, the question was, shall Article three, Section three oh two, sentences one and two be repealed and rewritten to read? Any A, any elector who has been a city resident for two years preceding the qualifying date for an election may qualify for candidacy of mayor and city commissioner. B, the city clerk acting as supervisor of elections of the city shall be empowered as the qualified agent for city elections. Shall the above described amendment be approved? The results were, yes, seven hundred and thirty-two votes, no, six hundred and thirty-nine votes. Charter Amendment number two.
Can I stop you for a second there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Attorney, I wanted to ask you some questions in reference to, you know, this referendum, and the difference between passing and? referendum and the difference between passing and not passing. Do you want to take that as, are being read into the record or you want to revisit, go back to? I just want to know, you know, one by one, yes?
Mr. Mayor, I would rather, if you allow the clerk to complete her presentation...
Okay.
And then I'll, I'll make a report on the, what we have done.
Okay.
Pursuant to your own instructions.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charter Amendment Number Two, Article Three, Section 304, Compensation and Expenses. Shall Article Three, Section 304, Paragraph Three be amended to read? The commission may, at a regular call meeting and by four-fifth affirmative vote, approve expenses for commission members for travel and/or per diem expenses, which are for the direct benefit and/or direct city business. Expenses for travel and per diem shall be limited as provided by the statutes of the State of Florida. Shall the above-described amendment be approved? The results were, yes, 474 votes, no, 845 votes. Charter Amendment Number Three.
May I make a suggestion? You read how many votes you say it passed or didn't pass?
Charter Amendment Number Two did not pass. Charter Amendment Number One passed. Charter Amendment Number Three, Article Three, Section 307, Referendum by Petition. Shall Article Three, Section 307.5 be repealed and amended to read? When a referendum petition to repeal an ordinance is filed with the city clerk or other official designated by the commission, the ordinance sought to be reconsidered shall be deemed valid until results from such referendum are certified. Shall the above-described amendment be approved? Yes, 641 votes, no, 608 votes. This amendment passed. Charter Amendment Number Four, Article Three, Section 308, Mayor-Vice Mayor. Shall Article Three, Section 308, first sentence be amended to read? To repeal that the mayor executes contracts and deeds, these are duties of the city manager. Shall the above-described amendment be approved? Yes, 594 votes, no, 669 votes. This amendment did not pass. Charter Amendment Number Five, Article Six, Section 604, Recall. Shall Section 604 be repealed and amended to read? The qualified elector of the city shall have the power to recall and remove from office any elected official of the city as provided by Florida statutes and/or City of West Miami ordinances, provided that in no event such recall takes place, takes place before the expiration of one year after such elected official has been elected. Shall the above-described amendment be approved? Yes, 877 votes, no, 492 votes. This amendment passed. Charter Amendment Number Six, Article Eight, Transition Schedule. Shall Sections 801, 805, 806, 807, and 808, adopted in 1949, as well as provisions adopted in 1978 and 1980, in conflict with the rest of the charter, be repealed and substituted with the following language? All prior charter provisions inconsistent with the present charter and amendments approved on November 4, 2014 elections shall be repealed. Shall the above-described amendment be approved? Yes, 568 votes, no, 624 votes. This amendment did not pass. Last amendment, Charter Amendment Number Seven, Article Seven, Article Eight, Section 805, Schedule. Shall this, the schedule of elections remain to be conducted on the second Tuesday of April of every even number year? Shall the above-described amendment be approved? Yes, 976 votes, no, 310 votes. This amendment passed. So that concludes my report and item 11D is Contemplated Resolution Approving the Result of These Elections. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Pursuant to a resolution that you all passed on 16 July 2014, the basic premise is that, number one, the city attorney is hereby instructed and directed to renumber or to reletter approved amendments to the articles or sections of charter in order to conform with the charter. In other words, whatever was approved or disapproved, to just go ahead and take it from one place and put it to the other without changing the meaning or the text of the amendment or the existing charter. And also, you had instructed the city clerk to delete referendum repeal section and incorporate referendum approve section to the charter. So I, we contacted, as a matter of fact, Yolanda did, contacted the municipal code...
Corporation.
Corporation, Municode, in order to advise him that a referendum had taken place and that certain proposal had been approved and certain proposal had been deleted. In the past, if you have observed the charter as it stands right now, as it reads from Municode, there was a lot of inconsistencies and errors on their part. As a matter of fact, I have a letter from 1989 from Ms. Aguilar to Municode stating that in the, in their... pardon me, a bit. In addendum number six, that the city, that Municode has sent, they had not incorporated past resolutions and/or a charter amendment. If you read it today, still the mayor, the office of the mayor had been abolished and when it was repealed in 1986.
Correct.
Also, the citizens' league had approved that councilman was going to be considered commissioners. And still, if you go and look at Municode, it was the same thing. I mean, they had not done it. So what we did was, I requested from Yolanda to be kind enough as to call Municode. We were in conference for quite a long time and finally, they directed us how to convert it from the existing version that they had in the computer to words. So we could work out the document that actually would be going out to Municode for them to be totally correct. In your packet, did you disseminate the packet that I sent you, the charter, the red line?
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, we worked out the charter into the converted words and at your leisure, if you want to, you can go to the city clerk or to myself and I'll be very happy to show you a red line version, or was changed or taken out and had been inserted in the new language. And we created that the day before yesterday and it will be available for you to review it at some point, the new charter as it's going to be filed with the clerk of the Miami-Dade County Commission. And also, you have to, at some point, determine whether you want to call the Municode, direct the manager to call Municode and find out what is the charges that they're going to have, that you're going to have, for them to have the new charter in their records. So you have to make up the session to instruct Yolanda to find out whether or not you want the Municode to... You see, Municode is a private corporation, it's not an official entity. You can have it, everybody has it, they're throughout the United States and they have the, all of the cities and counties in the state of Florida.
We'll have a conflict. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any other question, please?
Any other questions? So in other words, the yes and the no's are incorporated in the charter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The votes?
None, none of them.
What do you mean, the votes?
The vote, I mean, you have yes, some of them passed, some of them didn't pass, so the ones that didn't pass, the charter stays the same or...
Yes, it's...
If it did not pass, the charter remains the same.
Okay.
If it passed, the charter was amended. And I'll give you an example. At some point, we have Section 3.02, that in one sentence, you had three separate items. So what you did in the charter amendment and the citizen did was to, in the qualifications, you approve the following, or the citizen approved the following. Any elector who has been a city resident for two years preceding the qualifying date for an election may qualify for candidacy of a mayor or city commissioner. That passed, so now we have it as 3.02A. The other one that passed was, the city clerk acting as supervisor of election shall be empowered to, after the qualifying agent, be empowered as a qualifying agent for the city election. That was also passed. Now, in that same sentence, they had something that said, an elector of the City of West Miami that had been a resident for three years, of course, that was deleted. And the following sentence was renumbered to 3.05-B1. Any member charged with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture, we changed it from 3.02 to 3.05 because it was precisely where it belongs. So any other part of the charter, like for instance, the deletion of the mayor, the abolishing of the mayor's office, we just delete it from the charter as it's going to be appeared now in the records.
Okay. Any other questions to the city attorney? Vice Mayor?
Yes, in reference to recognizing the residents that served on the board with a certificate or small plaque, I don't know if that's been done. I think we should, because they did put in some hours coming to these meetings. So I think that, I don't know, maybe a certificate or a small plaque?
Never did that before, never really did that.
Okay, well, maybe it's about time that we do it. Because if we need to do it again, I think it would show, you know, the appreciation would go a long ways on getting them to come back and serve again or getting others to come back and serve because, you know, they did go out of their way to come here and spend all those hours.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
When would you like for us to include this on the agenda so that the clerk can prepare the certificates and invite the residents on behalf of the mayor and city commission to come to the meeting?
Next meeting if possible, if, the sooner the better.
December 3rd.
I know this is a time of year that's a little difficult.
It can be done, we're pressed for time, there are other matters that are going to...
Then maybe the next one.
How about the first meeting in January? Would that work for you all?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
First meeting in January 2015?
Served before? No, just, just the one...
To the Charter Review Board Members.
Oh, the Charter Review?
Yes.
The Charter Review. A certificate of service, is that what you would like to, or a certificate of appreciation?
What would be most appropriate.
A certificate of appreciation?
Something nice, something that they can hang up on their wall and look at and say, yes, I served and helped the city move forward.
Okay, so it is going to...
So when we call them again and we ask them, hey, can you please serve?
In another four years.
Okay, can, anything else?
First meeting of January 2015.
Yes, can, can you read item D, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11D, Resolution of the City of West Miami Adopting and Implementing the Results of the November 4, 2014 Election, Approving Certain Amendments to the Charter of the City of West Miami, Directing the City Clerk to File Said Charter and Its Amendment with the Clerk of Miami-Dade County and Further Instructing the City Clerk to Forward the City Charter with Its Amendments to the Municipal Code Corporation, Municode, for its publication by mayor and city commission.
I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blane?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Vice Zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item?
Next item is, this is the first meeting, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, establishing certain regulations with parking control devices, commonly known as parking meters, authorizing city administration to conduct studies and recommend to the city commission areas where parking meters should be installed, authorizing the installation of parking meters in areas determined by the city commission, establishing payment, payment for the parking meters pursuant to resolutions adopted by the City of West Miami by mayor and city commission.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blane?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Vice Zero, item passes. And this ordinance will be published on a newspaper of general circulation and will be heard for second reading on the, in public reading on the December 3, 2014, at 7:30 PM, city commission meeting.
Just time to publish?
Yes, I, they have new deadlines, I was able to, I'll be able to publish, just sending the information tomorrow, first time in the morning.
Thank you.
For the December 3 meeting.
Item E?
I think we have to renumber, reletter this, there was a mistake, I apologize, we have two Es, as I see here. I apologize. Am I authorized to renumber and reletter?
Of course.
Okay. F, this will be item 11F, Request for Proclamation to be Presented in Commemoration of the 26th Anniversary of Revista Carteles at an Event Scheduled for December 1, 2014, Celebrating Also the Day of the Radio Announcer. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner Suarez.
Well, you know, I'm sorry, we know, we are part of the Cuban-American community and we have in our memories and our history, many good things that we have in our republic and this is one of them. We always, always have the Day of the Announcer in the radio for many, many years. And always activities in reference to those guys or those women, some men, that work in the radio announcing, you know, and give us the news, the informations and many things that we listen all day and night in our homes and our cars, et cetera. Now, this magazine, Carteles, is also a magazine, has been for many years in our culture. And this magazine used to be not only published in Cuba but was distributed all over the Puerto Rico, Santo Domingo, Dominican Republic, Central America for many, many years. So they celebrated 26th anniversary here in the second time they are produced and I think that we should do a recognition to them with this, presenting this proclamation to this Revista Carteles.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next item?
And last item is item 11G. This is a request to fill vacancies to the Code Enforcement Board. Mr. Penning informed that he needs two permanent members and two alternates. This is by mayor and city commission and, and mayor and members of the city commission recently on, one of the members of the Code Enforcement Board, Camilo Vilches, resigned from the board and leaving a vacancy and by, according to the list I have, I order of succession, the next, the next commission member who is, who should appoint a... succession, the next, the next commission member who is, who should appoint a, a member, is Vice Mayor Blanes, followed by Commissioner Rodriguez, then Mayor Mujina, then Commissioner Blanca.
So we need four?
Two members and two alternates. So you, you can start thinking and looking for members...
I will.
To fill the vacancies we have.
Mayor, before, excuse me, before we finish this, let me tell the, the public...
Go to the order?
No, no, I was talking about the previous item, the Revista Cartelas.
Oh, okay.
It's a magazine, the revista, we call it in Spanish, revista, it's a magazine, cartelas, was a very famous magazine.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go to the order, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good night.